...the safety aspect considerably easier. Packaging and labeling, Colorado, I've got it in detail in the thing. Colorado has a whole host of packaging and labeling laws that we're looking at. I meant to bring them, they're at my desk, I'll bring them up later, but I went to a conference a couple weeks ago, and they have K cups with cannabis-infused teas. And they also have tea that's available. No, the cannabis is not in the versions that I'm gonna distribute, so you can take a look at. They are prototypes. But the point is, that we've gone so mainstream that cannabis is now infused with K cups. For those of you who don't know what a K cup is, it's a little cup that you put in a curing machine for the coffee that's in every office all across the country. But more importantly, we also have some tea that I'll share with you, and you can see for yourself the packaging, the labeling, the dosing that's in there. It's very professional, and a very different scenario than I think we're gonna hear about today. Third-party testing. This product is a consumable, it is ingested into the body. That makes third-party testing a real must to ensure the product is safe, free from metallics found in the soil, and devoid of mold. More importantly, it is essential for proper dosing that all batches of flour and concentrate be tested by an impartial third-party laboratory. I added a note in here for the committee about making sure that it's a specific ISO certification. I won't, I'll save you the trouble on the audio. One other thing that's come to my attention, I'm very into preventing, making sure people know about GMOs, very supportive of labeling, I'm not interested in having the marijuana industry go into Monsanto's side. I added a prohibition on GMO, which it seems may actually end up creating trouble for people who are doing natural hybrids here in the state. So I'm working to come up with some language that would change that, so that it does not do, end up getting with people that are vocal. Let me talk about industry trends real quick, I gave you some market data in there. In 2014, the legal market marijuana industry grew by 74 percent. The market in one year grew by 74 percent. That is astounding growth, and it has to do with the opening of adult-use markets. I don't know of any other industry that has seen that kind of growth in one year. With the anticipated market expansion nationally, Arcview, the leading cannabis investor research group, estimates the market will be $10.8 billion in 2019. In 2014, it was just $2.7 billion. As you can see, a significant portion will be focused on oil and concentrates. This leaves Maine at an interesting position if we can enter the market earlier than other states while ensuring a strong thoughtful implementation designed to mitigate risk. You gotta hear a lot about the big marijuana boogeyman. You can't just have a conversation about the market without addressing the boogeyman of big marijuana. First, there is no big marijuana right now. If there was, I would've seen it at the damn Arcview convention, it wasn't there. Even though Arcview Group is a small network investing in risk-averse aspects, even, let me say that again, even the Arcview Group is a small network investing in risk-averse aspects of the marijuana industry. It wasn't even until the past year or so that any checks had began being written. And most of the investments are going to ancillary service industries, for example, real estate, social media apps, co-packing facilities, infusion and product companies. While some are making investments in dispensaries and cultivations, for the most part, it remains too risky to invest in grow facilities and dispensaries. There's no question that the risk is abating as more states challenge the federal government, but folks still remain hesitant. This bill authorizes Bablo to determine the size of cultivation facilities, as well as the number of licenses issued. They have full authority to make determinations based on supply and demand, ensuring that the market stays in stasis. Of that, 60 percent of grow licenses are required to go to small farmers. 60 percent of grow licenses are supposed to go to the small farmers. This bill is the antithesis of big marijuana. This bill also requires any license holder to have been a resident for at least two years of Maine. In comparison, liquor license holders must be a Maine resident for at least one year. And any company choosing to do business in cannabis space here in Maine must have their state, their charter issued by the state of Maine. We don't want companies chartered in Delaware to avoid corporate accountability on something as important as this. These perceptions should go a long way, so we're warning against such boogeymen. The federal government, following the Washington State, Colorado, the DOJ released what has been known as the Coal Memo. It outlines eight key guidelines from which states must build their state policies if they're gonna have a legal market. You can read them there, but largely it's about diversion, preventing diversion to children, preventing diversion to states that do not already allow it for adult use, and preventing diversion of profits to the drug cartels. This bill is designed to meet all those guidelines while also providing the enforcement tools to ensure that the laws are followed. It's very important, the DOJ was very clear, you have to set strict standards, but also you have to make sure those standards are followed. The DOJ is working currently with the Treasury Department to open up banking in a practicable manner, which does still continue to be a challenge for the industry locally and nationally. The federal government has given the green light. Let's talk about the people's choice. The people of Maine are gonna decide on the question of whether to legalize, tax, and regulate marijuana for adult use, irrespective of what we do. Irrespective, they are gonna have that choice. My hope today, Representative Dionne's hope too, is to have the legislature craft a responsible package upon which people can vote. We have learned so much from Colorado and Washington State, the big thing we've really learned is to not get caught off-guard. Many of the challenges that we have heard have stemmed from poor planning. Today, Representative Dionne and I are both asking you to work with us to craft a rational policy so that Maine does not get caught off-guard. Senator Kozowski, I think you call it driving the train. By planning ahead, we can inoculate ourselves from having to scramble to put policies in place after the fact. By doing so, we can save a lot of trouble down the road. A stitch in that time really does save nine. It is said that we've been denying the people the right by introducing this legislation. On the contrary, we are setting good policy and asking the people to decide for themselves the question of whether to legalize or not. This is the responsible path forward, this is the last time it will be made available to us as a tool, and this is a question for the people to decide. It is essential, finally, that if the people of Maine vote to legalize marijuana, that we pay close, ask close attention to the details of the implementation, as some of us have to planning ahead. And to be clear, Representative Dionne and I have taken our reputations on this policy. We're both born and raised here, I hope to be buried here as well, hopefully later and not sooner, alongside centuries and centuries of my ancestors. We have a vested interest in Maine, our people, and our collective future. We will be here to see through the implementation if it comes to that, and we both believe it will. Our hope is that we do not have a failed implementation because we did not fail to plan. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Representative Russell? Representative?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question, Representative Russell.
Sure. What section are we talking about?
You, and I, I've not read your bill on the line yet.
Happy to walk you out to your bed, and then I'll give you some others.
I'm sure. But you mentioned that one way to keep this in a local industry is require that any business, any business, any company choosing to do business here must be chartered in Maine. How do state corporations need to apply?
Take it up, I'm glad.
Does Colorado do that?
I don't believe Colorado does, but we've heard from a lot of folks, particularly characterists who are genuinely concerned, and we also heard from some of the substance abuse folks, that they're concerned about big marijuana coming in and taking over our state. We have the right to require that corporations charter here, and we have greater control over them if they do. I think this is actually a new and novel approach to making sure that whatever is done is done locally and it's not here.
Thank you.
Representative Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did a couple of questions. I wanted, does this bill allow for people who grow their own marijuana to decide to...
It does. This bill allows six plants total to be grown. The medical marijuana program, in contrast, allows six flowering plants. We sort of went back and forth about what that would look like. I think for law enforcement, it would be cleaner if it was just six plants, so six plants is six plants, you don't have to get out the magnifying glass to determine if it's flowering or not. I think it's just gonna be clear, six plants per adult.
And also, if this bill passes, will it still be a compromise?
Very much like the medical marijuana program isn't conflict with what's federal law, it will be. I think we've seen with the Coal Memos, very specifically outlining a path forward for states to experiment, as I think the phrase that the president uses, almost all of the, on the conservative side, at the CPAC conference, this was the topic everybody wanted to talk about. I don't think that you're gonna see a scenario where we go backwards. In fact, there are gonna be five referenda across the country that the Marijuana Policy Project is doing, there's gonna be five other states that are looking to put the questions in the ballot or through the legislature, like I'm asking you to do. And if you end up with even six or seven of those states voting yes, and then there's a few other states that are doing it on their own, it's gonna be very difficult. Ohio happens to be one of them, Ohio is a swing state, so it's gonna be very difficult for any president going forward to roll back the direction that we're going. There have been bills introduced repeatedly in Congress, they actually voted to defund DEA, who was going after marijuana. It's been a lot of progress at the federal level. In fact, I don't have a whole lot of, whole lot of faith in Congress right now to do anything, they can barely name a bridge, to be honest with you. But on this issue, real progress is being made, and it's an interesting coalition, if the rest is the libertarians, who are really pushing this, and it's really got a lot of steam here.
Representative Tinnott?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. The information that you used in your chat...
Could you put your mic on, please? Thank you.
If the research you used in your chat...
Yeah.
Do you believe that using those figures of 1999, that 16 years later, that these facts would prove up to be approximately the same as they are?
You're talking about addiction?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have two charts in there, I wanna make sure I wrote the right one. Yeah, those are, that's the only chart that I could find that was already pre-made that I could put in there, but the numbers are holding pretty steady. I mean, addiction rates are pretty much addiction rates, they really are holding steady.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Representative?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Representative. I guess as a young millennial, I should be jumping up in the shore, but I'm really trying hard to grapple with this issue, much like everybody else, that, you know, just because we can, shouldn't we, as a society, move in this direction? I guess my question is more open, it's more, a bigger picture, of why this is so important to allow a new substance into your body? Why do we still wanna encourage smoking, even if we hear that it might be so, quote-unquote, safer? You know, can't people find something else to do that's fun and more productive with their time? Why do we need to add a new substance to the list that you can already do right now?
Representative Shanet, you don't tend to consume any items anyway, to be clear, right? So you're very, you're about as straight and narrow as they come.
No, not before.
There's a big wall right there, it's one grid.
You may wanna rephrase that.
You should be wearing my red shoes. Good point. So, I don't have another one to work with either. So, we're just gonna go away from the euphemisms. I hear your argument. The problem is that not everybody really lives their life the way that you do. I drink bourbon. I drink a fair amount of bourbon. I don't drink enough bourbon that it's gonna cause problems. I think that there are people out there that can't hold their bourbon. And you've heard the whiskey drunk, the mean drunk, the laughing drunk, the sweet drunk. Some people can't hold their liquor, and that's a real problem. We tried prohibition, and it failed. And I don't believe that we should be putting moral judgments on what other people can choose to put in their body or not to choose to put in their body. Why is it that I can have a glass of bourbon, two cubes? If I had it and eat, it'd be a problem because it's not cold enough. Why is it that I can drink bourbon, and nobody thinks anything of it? In fact, every time I put a photo of my bourbon, or my Manhattan, or my Old Fashioned on Facebook, you'd be amazed at the likes that I get in the comments. We don't just judge it, we don't judge it, we celebrate it. We celebrate alcohol. You watch Mad Men, and they're smoking like nobody's business. They're celebrating it, it's part of society. I'm not saying we should celebrate marijuana, but what I am saying is that why is it that we can celebrate one thing and judge people for something else? That happens to be safer, it's less addictive, it's significantly less addictive. And also, the last thing I would say in response to you, is that we can pretend that we live in utopia. Where, you know, if I lived in utopia, I'd be a size two. I'm not. I like carbohydrates, it's evident. I probably should not be consuming pasta, but I do. Are you gonna judge me for it? Are we gonna create laws that say that we should not have pasta? And I go back to the real question, which is, if you, if I had a bill for you today to ban alcohol, to prohibit alcohol, how would you vote? And I really think you need to, it's a superficial question, but it's actually not, it really gets to the heart of the issue. I don't think that my friends and colleagues, some of whom run very sizable businesses, should run the risk of being criminalized simply because at the end of the day, they pull out a vapor pen and they consume marijuana, whereas I consume a glass of wine or a glass of bourbon. It's not our place to judge what other people put in their own bodies. But at the end of the day, the people of Maine are gonna vote on this, it's gonna come through Citizens Initiative, and I think that the people of Maine should vote on it, but that we should give them a policy that we can be proud of, and we should not hope that they're gonna do the opposite and vote against it like the governor of Colorado did, and then have to scramble to put these regulations together.
Just a quick follow-up, Madam Chair. And I hear you, Representative, and I don't wanna seem like I'm coming off as judging, but I mean, we're talking about a current illegal substance right now making it legal. So to me, it warrants the question about, should we be doing that, and where do you draw the line with Sam? So if you're using that argument of, because we've legalized alcohol, that somehow we should be able to then legalize just about anything, because you then use that same argument for other substances. I mean, where do you draw that line where it's like, this is safe but heroin isn't, and some of the other illegal drugs? I mean, if we push this forward, at what point do you say you can't use that argument for other substances?
It's a fair question. So by harder substances, I presume you mean things like cocaine, am I right?
Just about any illegal drug, yeah.
But you would consider cocaine to be a harder substance?
It's illegal.
Okay.
So yes.
Cocaine is a Schedule II drug. Marijuana is a Schedule I drug. The impact of marijuana on the lives of patients all across the state has been transformative. When I first put in a bill to legalize marijuana, I did not believe in medical marijuana, I thought it was a step toward legalization, I fundamentally just believed that. I was all for legalization, but, oh great, you're backing it. I was the last person that was gonna believe it. And now, I've done a 180-degree turn, because that's where I go, I hear the phrase, "I got my life back." And right now, I have a friend in Wyndham, who has a child who has autism, and he banged his head 30 to 40 times up against the wall. Autism isn't on the list of items that a doctor can write a recommendation for. So he had to write it for chronic pain, because obviously, if you're banging your head against the wall 30 times a day, that creates chronic pain. There are very real medical benefits, there are, that we haven't even begun to look at. And that's where you draw the line. I don't think cocaine does anything other than creating euphoria. Heroin, actually alleviates pain, we just call it by a more suburban name, which is called opiates, oxycodone, it is heroin. And we've actually created an addiction problem in that market. And the interesting thing about this, is the medical marijuana, if you talk to folks, they are getting off of oxycodone, they are getting off of, off of oxycodone. Whether it's because they were prescribed it by their physicians and they didn't wanna take it because it was causing problems for them, or they had already become addicted, it is removing, alleviating those symptoms.
Are there any other questions for Representative Russell? Seeing that, thank you, Representative.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any cosponsors that would like to speak?
Senator, everybody?
Your cosponsor, 138?
Says that here, okay. Senator Rosen, Representative, following members of the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. My name's Dave Marimondo, I represent the good people of the Senate District 12. I don't often read it, so quickly. Appleton, Camden, Preget, and Township, Cushing Township, O'Vale, Almonte, and Desile Plantation, Mussonville, Island Township, North Haven Househead, Rockland, Rockport, South Thompson, St. George, Thompson, Union, Final Haven, and Warren. I'm delighted that both cosponsors speak in support of LD-138, an act to legalize, tax, and regulate marijuana. Too many Whinney students have denied access to the ladder of opportunity because they are unlucky enough to have been bound with a joint in their pocket. A drug record of any kind precludes students from accessing telegrams and Stafford student loans, the very tools that can help lift families out of poverty. And by precluding them for life from this ladder, what have we created for them instead? This spiral staircase down, in place of an education or trade, people are instead forced into a lifetime of dead-end jobs with low wages. At this point, they may well intersect with the criminal justice system again, only this time for a crime that actually harmed someone, further eroding any chance they had to lift themselves up. All because they consumed a substance safer than alcohol. You will likely hear from many people talking about protecting our children from having access to marijuana. We aren't proposing giving any access to children, only recognizing that our kids make mistakes and don't deserve to be considered criminal because of it. How are we protecting our children if prohibition is preventing them from attending college or trade school? How are we protecting our children if prohibition is allowing the drug cartels to sell to them and putting them in contact with someone selling seriously dangerous drugs? And how are we protecting our children by creating scenarios for them to intersect with law enforcement over a substance that has been criminalized based on misinformation and height? And how are we protecting our children who are living in poverty because their parents can't access the student loans that lift their family out of poverty from one mistake? Regardless of the reasons for ending this prohibition, the reality is, we have the potential for two initiatives to come this session, rendering the issue entirely out of our hands. We have a chance to set the policy now to get it right, and then ask the people in Maine whether they want to keep or end prohibition. I believe mayors will vote to end it. If that wasn't the case, Substance Abuse Council wouldn't be here in force, too. It makes it all more important that we get the policy right and do it now, when we can plan ahead, instead of scrambling in 2017, as Washington State and Colorado have had to do. I believe adults should have the right to choose and the responsibility to choose wisely. It's why I don't believe prohibition's right policy for Maine. The consequences of the policy have had far more deleterious impacts on families and communities than the effects of marijuana could ever possibly claim. That said, the issue is immediately before us, and we can either drive the train or set the policy, or we can scramble. Our constituents deserve the right to vote on this, but they deserve to vote on a well-thought-out policy. Representative Russell's bill strikes a fair balance between public safety and civil liberties, law ensuring, people get a solid vote, and for that matter, Senator Dionne will endorse too. For all these reasons and many more, I urge you to vote on the pass of LD-138. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Senator Marimondo? Representative Shanet?
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator. I wanna zero in on a section to talk about students.
Yes.
And this will probably get brought up a couple times, and if somebody else in the state answers that time, too, I'm assuming that you're referring to college students.
I am.
And I just wanna zero in on that, because I mean, I only can base it on my own personal experience, but back in my college days, which was not that long ago, there was an internal policy for handling situations regarding drugs, and different altercations on campus. And oftentimes, it wasn't made public, oftentimes it was handled internally. And I thought we also decriminalized marijuana, so I guess I'm trying to get at, what is that particular issue you're trying to solve? We're talking about college students, and we've decriminalized marijuana.
We, at the state level, and that seems to be what controls the administration of these grants, it's not recognized, and so therefore, even with a marijuana bust in a place like this, that bust of an ounce and a half is not a crime, it still can affect grants, as I understand, as I believe. Policies are handled differently in different arenas. Federalities do not always match with ours.
Any other questions? Seeing that, thank you.
Thank you. You put me on the hot seat. Sorry we have to stay.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the sponsor of LD-1401 first, to keep it fair. Representative Dionne.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Rosen, Representative, following members of the committee, back to him. I had to rethink my approach for my testimony today, after you've been subjected to the comprehensive analysis from my colleague, the good representative from Monjoy Hill, Diane Russell. I don't know if I should come in and try to drive it home harder. So I'm gonna make some observations. I provided some written testimony, and I assume when you have a moment, you'll read it, and I think it goes with its tale, so I'm gonna just try to hit some high points, and then I'm gonna give you 10 reasons why the bill I'm proposing makes sense. In saying that, I also wanna underscore the fact, the committee has an opportunity to do good work, if it should choose to merge the best from both Representative Russell's initiative and mine. I don't attach personal ego to the bill, I think it's the right thing to do, however, I appreciate the committee process, and you will do your work, and see if this vote will hold, Bill, accordingly. First, I wanna tell you why I'm here today. In 1999, I came on board as a sheriff with an initiative for medicinal marijuana, it was called Passion and Care. And when I went along with and supported that initiative, I started taking phone calls from many of my colleagues in law enforcement. I took the first couple of phone calls seated, and by the end of the morning, I was standing up, pacing my office, trying to explain to people why I hadn't lost my mind. My colleagues were much more direct than would probably be repeated in this room, but I thought it made sense, because it was an opportunity to recognize that there were significant illnesses in the community that were being experienced by our friends, neighbors, family, that could not be reconciled with current pathology. But that marijuana, for whatever reason, I've never claimed to be a botanist or a chemist, it worked. Okay? And I remember the victory party, when the referendum passed that idea, much like what we passed for resolve, a wonderful sentiment, a couple of sentences, and it actually got through, and we were all amazed. And we had this naive expectation that everything would fall into place after the fact. And since 1999, every single session of this legislature has been confronted with a number of bills addressing medicinal marijuana that's been heard in health and human services. It has in a way, because in essence, it's one of my professors must say, we were left with building an airplane in flight. So, on the one hand, you wanna pay strict attention to what you're doing, but it's always open to modification, and we haven't resolved that at all. One of the reasons I came forward with this bill is twofold. One, I think we needed to have an initiative that would guarantee, or at least promise the possibility of a prudent rollout. There would be a retail site on every corner, and it would be important to incorporate municipal intention, that municipality and its residents decided they didn't want that presence of their community, but not add it there. All of that was critical. I wanted to put a cap on the current state of affairs in the care company industry, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And then, we wanted to be conservative in our approach about how much tax revenue we could expect from NASA. I went out and talked to colleagues in Washington State, and they had glorious aspirations about how much money they were gonna make, how they were gonna spend it. And in Colorado, it was a bipartisan debate about the level of excise tax, and if it were too high, it would just encourage the black market to come back and union. The second reason that I joined this bill is the fact that I hope, that I publicly stated this in the past, I stated this in the past, I had hoped that the federal government was going to resolve the recreational question, right? Historically, that's what federal governments do. They seek conflicts or emerging issues among the states. They figure out a way in Congress to resolve it and declare something to be law and land. And that's what they've done with most drug-related legislation and eventual statutes. But it doesn't appear that that's going to be the trajectory that Washington's going to elect to do when it comes to drug reform in general. I think we may see a new version of federalism, where individual states will choose for themselves an appropriate path, and the federal government will try to navigate the white spaces in between those state policies. So we could find ourselves in a place where certain states will legalize and other states will not, and that's where the federal government would supplement those enforcement areas in the latter states. So that's what we need to pay attention to. There's been a dearth of silence from our own federal delegation around marijuana. There are a number of bills pending in Washington, but they don't seem to be going anywhere, but they've made for great news conferences. We have significant issues around banking, for instance, or insurance, for those who are involved in this industry. So I was convinced that we needed to come forward with state legislation, period. Maybe that's what the federal government's tried to tell us with their memos and their hands-off doctrine, is that you decide for yourself, as states. This bill addresses the concerns of the federal memos, and I think we would be in compliance under that particular model. The second piece to that is, I propose that you pay attention to the dispensary model here in Maine. It is subject to more scrutiny and oversight than liquor licenses are. Everything about that has been under a state microscope and evaluation, and I think they present a great model about how we might move forward in a limited fashion with retail outlets. So I think that's critical. There's nothing here about providing young people with marijuana. To go to Representative Shanet's concern, look, it's already out there. It's everywhere. My kids used to refer to this clam bake, and I thought, "Who goes to a clam bake on a Friday night?" So it took me a little while to catch on to the code. And even they told me, "Dad, you're being kind of silly. You know, there's no amount of police officers that can do something about this." So I think, Representative Shanet, what I'm hoping you and the Canadian Committee considers is these bills are really asking us to make a turn at the intersection, to abandon the idea that we regulate drug use as a law enforcement problem, but start instead to look at it as public health issue. And that's what we do with alcohol, that's what we've done with cigarettes. We don't criminalize people if they choose to consume, but we do what we can to shape their consumption patterns and hopefully do so in a way that belongs to their ability to be a functioning member of society. So that's what this bill tries to do. And the differences between Representative Russell's bill and mine are about the number of retail sites. Let me answer that question. Do you have enough resources to provide proper regulatory inspection? It's simple. There are just so many antigens at Babel. I guess you could ask that director, if he had to or she had to monitor this, how many did they effectively do? Let me back up for a moment. Remember that night in the hall to head? It was like eight of us in the room celebrating the passage of medicinal marijuana. The next day, there was nothing at the state. The legislature had never considered it. You tried to play catch-up, and you assigned like three people at DHHS to watch over the industry that now has probably 14,000, 1400, 1400, a lot of caregivers out there. It's challenging. And that's why I'm saying, people say, "Well, Mark, you only save 20 retail outlets." I'm saying 20 to initiate the market demographics supportive that you expand it, if you have the resources to do it, you expand it, if the communities want it, you can expand it, but start conservatively. And in terms of projected revenue, I'm looking at about $26 million a year. What we base that on? There's about $4 million a year coming in from current medicinal marijuana sales taxes. There's some concerns whether or not we collect all the revenue we're due, but we're getting about $4 million. If you use the models that have been established in Colorado and Washington State, we can multiply that by six, okay? Because there's still an underground economy that's going to happen there. That's all we're trying to do, bring that economy to the fore, make it worthwhile for individuals who are engaged in a gray market to join normal market practices, and then start to look at people that are involved in the use of drugs from a harm reduction perspective, a public health perspective, and reduce the need for police officers. The tough luck, as a former police officer, we know that this war was lost a long time ago on marijuana. We deal with it when we're confronted with it, but we should be focusing our limited resources and our severs budget dollars on the real issue, which is opiate use and addiction in the state. Marijuana is the problem, and the public knows that. I don't think there's any one of us, or at least among law enforcement, who haven't been confronted by someone at a diner that says, "Look, just tax it and regulate it." They're almost surprised that we continue to march down that pathway, as if there's a flag to capture at the end of the road. There isn't. So these bills are asking you to reframe your perspective. I would also ask that the committee, if it would vote favorably on the initiative or combine initiative, to take it out to the voters. I think at the end, I actually trust them, and I find it amusing that the targeting heads will say, "Well, no, it's better than 16, or maybe 18, or 14." The best year for any election is the one you win, right? In hindsight, we know that was the best year. I trust the voters and their collective common sense. You can bring in this question now. I think they're ready to make a decision. I want the regulations to-